The regular meeting of the Kingsburg Board of Education will be held in the Bolton Middle School Media Center. Adequate notice that this meeting has been mailed to the Ashbury Park Press, filed with the Menace School Council of Kingsburg, posted on the district website, and posted inside the office of the Kingsburg Board of Education, 100 Palmer Place, Kingsburg, New Jersey, on March 11, 2021. Your call?
Ms. Clayton? Mr. Cook? Here. Mr. Sichliana?
Here.
Ms. Brazil?
Here.
Mr. Hoff? Ms. Kellerman-Ran?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
President for...
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Open it to the public for agenda items only.
If it's not a new agenda, just...
That's at the end.
No, I'm saying if I say something that's not new agenda, just, um, you know, one meal, I'll say it three times. Can y'all wanna have a cycle? Kingsburg. Um, I just had, first I had a few things to say, and then I had a couple questions to ask. So, we, we have had a threat of defending being taken away from us for a while, and we had no guarantee that it was gonna stay. So, we had a warning for a couple years now. We knew what's incoming. You know, teachers went and fought, the administration went for the kids, the parents, it was broadcast on the news. So, here we are today, another year that we knew these cuts were happening. And at this point, it's not the state's fault, and I, I may take heat for that. The state warned us that this is happening. The state told us they were teaching us how to do it right. We knew, we weren't supposed to be in Abbot District forever. It's like somebody who's receiving public assistance. They're not meant to be on it forever. We weren't meant to be forever in Abbot District. So, here we are now, another, another round of cuts. Question's on, what can be done? Why didn't the board prepare for these cuts? Why didn't our town, where all of our taxes? I did my research. I know everybody sees my stuff on Facebook, what, what I, what I post. Those are facts, those high charts are facts. They're not, I'm going at it, the ground, or they're facts. Our tax money is not, where, where is it coming? If that goes to the schools, we're literally cutting these teachers. These kids are being screwed over. For what? It's our fault, it's the board of education's fault, it's the town's fault, and it's our fault. We, the community, for not knowing, not questioning this, or what's that not? Has everything just been hurt? It's, it's, it's ridiculous. We are looking at, so we, we're, we're, but next year, we're gonna be all cuts. What are we doing now? What? Where, where are we cutting it? Where, where is the talk being sent about? How are we gonna stop this? We're, we're not getting paid for them, we're not. So, like, that's why. Where, where is this gonna stop? Where do we, where do we start getting in the right direction? I know you're not gonna do it, answer that thing right now, but the whole state thing is, oh, we're not getting it back. So, at this point, our money needs to go, where needs to go? Uh, looking around at other towns, I think all I can say is, go do your research. Go look at the other towns, where the money goes, where the school puts their money, all of that stuff. We said, even though people are gonna tell you that, I don't know what I'm talking about. Do your research. Um... Okay. My question is, the policy pays well. Again, you don't have to tell me, but so, how does somebody with an associate's degree start off on a staff salary by, that is meant for a place with a bachelor's degree? How does that happen? We both know that. We both know that. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and give you the need to do all that stuff. I would be happy to sit with anybody, anybody, and load up all my facts, because I'm not gonna have to, unless I have facts. How does that happen? How does somebody with an associate's degree get on a pay scale at level 40 that's supposed to have a bachelor's? Tell me how that happens. Um... Again, this is not personal, this isn't towards anybody. These are facts, these are things that are brought to me, I researched it, and then I come to you. But, two teachers teaching one line, one fact, two teachers teaching one fact, that were both passing on the old floor to get the genuine class. It doesn't treat a, a new change, you know, to, to a CBA. I, I'm also under the assumption that that class is, um, is funded by a grant. Okay, great. I don't know if that's true or not. That's a lot of soul. Does the grant pay for their, um, their benefits? Or does that come out of the board of education? Again, you don't have an answer for me. But these are the questions that are there and should be answered. Well, let me know, positions will be in help here, positions will be in help there. But, facts, I'll sit down with everybody, I'll sit down with all of you, and show you your facts. Um... The outside company that decides who's, who's getting cut, who we, you know, the kids pay, the teachers pay, like, it really, it really can't be done without us, because ultimately, at the end of the day, you're gonna say, yes, I agree with it, sorry, go find another job, kids, you know, whatever, go do whatever. But, where do you come to me that this goes to, that comes back to you, and how you guys get to the class, that to the class, you to the class? Who is the first person to see that, essence of that? That I, that actually I wanna know.
I don't know what company you're referring to.
Well, I was told, and quite a few other people were told, have, have the school district decide what classes and what teachers, what, they're an outside company.
There's no outside company.
Oh, okay, so who, who looks at that and decides that?
It's based, really, right now, we're basing everything on enrollment. So, if there's a certain amount of students, we have to budget for that amount of students in that grade level, X amount of classes. If there's a certain amount of students that are requesting a certain course, we budget for X amount of teachers for that course, based on the amount...
Okay, so, we're getting help, we were getting help every day for people to sign up for the police, whatever. Every day, we're getting help. Every...
That's a clause.
Basically, that's, oh, so one doesn't have to do with the others, a clause? Okay.
That's a, it's a clause for Bolton Middle School.
Okay, but then that's there. But, we're getting people, giving the whole presentation on why we need this program. But yet, you're cutting a class that teaches the kids, every single kid, to live out in the real world?
We're not cutting that class.
Okay, that's, that's a fact, it's great information, because it's to the outside world.
I know.
It's fine.
So, I said this all the time, if you look at and see positions listed for ID numbers, and you, and you know, everyone knows, everyone hears of what staff members are going. You don't know the transfers that happen to adjust for things that happen. So, there's a lot of transfers that will occur to fill needs that we have.
Right, and I do, I do get that, I totally understand. But why aren't we, or why haven't we prepared ourselves to stop these cuts? How are the other towns doing this? Where, where is the problem? Some of the cuts, like, where is the problem? Is it here? Is it the town? Is it us? Where is the problem?
We have prepared. Like, that's, like you said, like, this is inevitable. We knew it was happening.
Right.
We've slowly made the cuts that we need to do. There is some towns who have made a decision not to do that, and next year, maybe letting go of 75 staff members at one time, instead of 10, 15, 20, to gradually get to where they know they need to get to. So, that was us preparing. We're getting to where we know we need to.
We know now, for a long time, that we won't get any funding. We, we know. We could have prepared for this years ago.
And you know, I always say this, but if you give me some suggestions of how you think we could prepare, I'd love to hear it.
And I can literally tell you right now, um, 10 things that you can get rid of, or people that you, that we actually don't need.
And get also realize too, that we are governed by rules of tenure.
Yeah, I guess that, uh, 100% get that. But there, there's people, and I come to you, even after coming to you, there's people who still cancel their classes. There's the, I have a screen shot of it, I have evidence on it. Coming to you and telling you that these things does nothing, is no one there. Because they're still waiting. They're still waiting. And it's waiting, and it's still being waited. Also, we're not, not, we're not gonna back. I have screen shots. It's illegal. We're not just gonna watch this class, or not, it's gonna happen.
Did you reach out to the legislature right after?
I'm, see, that's what I'm saying, I'm not reaching out to the board of education when I come to you guys, and I'm green as a tree, it shouldn't happen again after I leave here. It shouldn't happen, 34 more cuts. It shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen.
And I told you before, I don't disagree with that.
I understand that, but I, like, I don't even know, I shouldn't have the school, what goes on. I quit writing my paper on the computer already, 'cause I could prevent it from happening. Can I, can I cancel today? Cancel? Yeah, mom, I have a screen shot of it. Good job, guys, you should know what to do. Screen shot. I'm going to get the phone, tell me my kids' family, and I, look, I need everybody else. I told the councils, I told everybody. I still care. This might be true, I don't care, we're not teaching. I don't care. You're gonna use your money, you're a hacker. Don't call me and tell me my kids are, and we're not taking your voting, and we're not, and I'm not saying every teacher that refuses, teachers would bust their ass. But I probably do want to do this, and then, some of the teachers are gone, and most of them got, people who do the job, who want to cancel class. Really, like, I just don't get it. Why do you know they have to do this to you? Because you're constantly wishing to talk, when trying to get things, uh, you know, happen, that, right, we really need just a cross with him. It makes no sense. No. Teaching instead of getting hurt, no sense. Things that are happening in our district, no sense. No. There's no sense to it. And it's like, what else more can we do as parents? The parents that are already there, the parents who are not getting them back. Finally, I don't care if it sticks, man. Finally, parents are going to come. We do a serious question, you want to sit down with me? To, with my, with my stats? I'll, I'll put this to the test, sit back, and if I'm wrong, if I ever, I'm not gonna sit down, I am, I'm gonna protest the fact. I do my research, and if I'm wrong, right, um, you're wrong, because this is fact. I can, I can handle it. I can handle it, I'm not gonna do this fact all the time. But I try to do what? I can do it by, I'm honest with you, every young, the kids, the teachers, the parents, you guys, like, some of the doctors signing up, you know. You know. I'm not up here thanking you guys, it's the same way. It has somewhere together, everybody has to find that, to make this, family, and heart. Family, heart. The schools, we're bound to offer. And it needs, it needs to be, to do with us. Um... That, that, I thought it was ending, not for a long time. Um, that's the other question.
Good evening, Sam Holcomb, Kingsburg Education Association, corresponding secretary. Actually, here, unprecedented challenges, here we stand facing, yet another major setback. As a district, we have already faced unimaginable loss. In the past years, we have lost staff members, faculty, and lots of support volunteers. We have lost support services, our community, we are wrong. Yet, this is the act. Across the country, students have lost an endorsement on that of educational hours, large portions of curriculum we may untouched. The anticipation of these shortcomings concept层面 is something we must be aware of. Yet, we have decided to cut our staff, coaching services, RCO, and have decided to lessen our staffing numbers. How can we continue to offer fewer services and still meet our students' needs? This seems to be the sad, we advance our blistered faces year after year. Most of us can see dark clouds forming on the educational horizon that spell the disaster. We are watching educational access walk out the door, but we are still logging back into learning. In the time where we should be adding programs, we are taking them away. During the moment when our staff is good, we need more support, we are giving them less. Is this really the best way to meet these vegetarian restrictions? That's it.
Hello, my name's Kate, and I was up on the car, by the way, it's Sammy. Um, this one I heard, the news about one of the staff members being cut, I went to the best school in town, today, social media, and I posted about, um, Mr. Fandera, but he... Am I allowed to? Okay, no problem, that's fine. So, I hit it up on Facebook, you know, I wanted to reach out to people I've been with, and be attacked by the loss of such an important person in our district. So, I, I'm all for it, because I just wanna read some of the stuff that a lot of students, you know, passed and pregnant, have heard about him. Um, with that of that teacher, I wouldn't have logged into my first choice college. Um, he guided by the making decisions that impact a student's career, can polish decisions. Uh, I probably learned that he graduated without his help and support throughout my time in his class. I graduated five years ago, and still turned him for advice from time to time. There were times I really wanted to drop out of college, and he supported me in helping me through that. Definitely would not be where I am today without him. Uh, this teacher goes out of his life, all of his students, and helps find all the senior internships. Even half of his, so he still checks in with his students, and is always offering to help and give advice. I truly believe it was the knowledge and experience of the teacher that made this class so valuable and meaningful. Mr. Fandera goes above and beyond for his students. He sets up very beneficial internships for his students, and that is thanks to all the networking he does. This teacher isn't just an asset to this district, he's an asset to every single student. Without him, I personally wouldn't have known where to begin in college. Not having this teacher, I'd say, jobs, a teacher prepares so much would be such a mistake. Mr. Fandera would make me really feel like I was a wolf there. I can only, I can only speak from my experience, but I know that, that my teacher truly cares about me and my success. Although I'm into the college experience, don't doubt me, because I started in this type of college. Without Fandera, I wouldn't be where I am today. I'm so very thankful for him. With today's, I've heard of Mr. Fandera, most students on our homes have the first clue of how to continue their education after high school. Without Mr. Fandera, I would have never believed I could go to college. Without this teacher, I truly would not be where I am. It's going to be my first graduate, that still tells this teacher for helping figure out my next step in creating my life. And the last one. He has exposed each and every one of his students to new opportunities, which many teachers cannot do. Being for high school will lose out significantly by cutting Mr. Fandera off. So, I know that all of the other cuts, I understand, I get it. I just wanna say that by saving one salary, I feel like this town is losing out, like, a lot. Sorry. Um, I just wanna leave, I'm saying, eventually, all of you won't be sitting where you are. It will be new community members and new people that are happily making decisions you're making. And I just wanna ask if you want people up there that have the opportunities because of Mr. Fandera, and have all this knowledge, and thought to go and do good things out of this town, or do you want people who are not gonna live this anymore by cutting such an important person in our lives in our district? So, um, so I'm, if you guys are okay with it, I just wanna leave the comments to do that. I'm just gonna do it, and do what you can. Any notes? Are you trying?
I actually just have one more. I need to, I need to ask a question. Sorry. That was another part, is, was our, like, did there any amazing people in this town that say, listen, do you have, like, a surplus of funding that you can, like, help us out? Does that happen?
You mean, like, change the high chart?
Yeah. Yeah, that could definitely be.
That's, you'd have to go to town council about that.
Okay, but at this point, like, does the board, uh, can the board of the town council say, guys, we're cutting so much for our kids, do you have a surplus of funding that you can help us out? And do we get this rate out? I mean, is that a, an option? Is that a point, so that, this, come out?
Javale Brogan, 29, Queensburg. Um, I just wanna, my parents speak on behalf of, I have a former student, and I have a current student, um, regarding the teacher cuts. Every year, they just get worse and worse, and the choices of teachers seem to get worse and worse. Um, one teacher in particular, um, I can speak on behalf of the class of 2020. Um, you had 101 students in that graduating class, and I believe only a quarter of that, 20 students, um, went on to help my child included. And if it wasn't for that one particular teacher, I don't know, I mean, anyone would have had the help that they needed to pursue them, particularly with BACs, um, scholarships, et cetera, they would have been lost. And to have only 20 kids in a graduating class so small to move on to college, you should want more for your students. Um, another teacher that's included in the cuts this year, that's a, she is a wonderful math teacher that cares about their students, and I, and I can't, and she doesn't even test my class, but she's wonderful. And looking at data universe compared to, um, the data research from 2018 from salary.gov, um, it's kind of disheartening to see what some of the salaries are and the median. It's, we have a lot of fat that needs to be cut. We really do. Some of the, some of the salaries that we're paying out, some of them, I don't even know who they even are. And my thoughts have been in this district and preschool. Um, I just don't even know what to say. I honestly would love to know when these cuts are being made, if the students are being even taken into consideration. It's really, it's disheartening, it really is. And, um, when it comes to the whole college situation, um, I'd really love to know who's going to help these kids along the way when it comes to the seniors, this, well, I guess the seniors, but the junior cuts from that's in this year, who will be helping them along the way next year? Because honestly, there's not anybody in this building that will be able to help them. There really isn't. And that comes from experience, from having a child who is a freshman in college this year, and a child that's getting, gonna be getting... and a child that's getting, gonna be getting ready to go to college. So I, I really don't know what your plans are for these kids. I really don't. And it makes me sick to my stomach. It really does. So I really hope you guys get your act together and do something for these kids because it's not, it's looking grim, honestly.
Anyone else for Jendy's?
As far as I'm concerned, I have to choose to be rather than a teacher. Um, I'm gonna piggyback off what everybody else said. Thank you, Mrs. Holcomb, for bringing up all of this about losing teachers. Besides, it's okay. Does anybody else know what SAC is? Anybody?
You said SAC?
SAC.
Yeah, substance abuse court.
Okay. How are we losing Mrs. Pecoraro? Who is taking her place? A substance abuse counselor that we had at state here for what, like twenty years? In a district that really needs, she's not just prevention. She doesn't just help kids that are addicted or that have substance abuse. She intervenes with families. Do you know that, has anybody researched how many families we have in this town with substance abuse? Have you seen the parents wanting to give up kids with, with substance abuse problems? And this is one of the, you know, the, the salaries that we're cutting. They're doing away, not even just saying like, oh, we're, we're putting someone else in there. We're doing away with that position, but with the other stuff. How? How are we doing this? How are my taxes paying for this? And our municipality, that pie chart needs to change. Because that municipality is like this and everywhere around me in town, that municipality is like this. And anyways, what are we paying for? If our, if our kids are not going to benefit from it, what, what are we paying for? What are we paying eighty-five thousand dollars a year for? Because it certainly isn't going to our schools. We have people, uh, stepping stones. They, they keep coming into our district. I mean, you're, you're here now. This is, this is like our last hope because your, your kid's working in this district. But like, I, I feel like this is like, if you don't help us, nobody's helping too. Because your kids are here too. So we need substance abuse cancer. We need that. This town needs that. These kids need somebody to go to. She's sitting here as a cool kid. I, I can't even believe my mind is blown that we would, I hope she's watching right now because Mrs. Pecoraro, we see you. This town sees you. I've spoken to so many parents that are further that we're going to go to this, this position. How? How in this town? In this town where we have kids dying from overdoses, dying from substance abuse? How in this town do we feel it's right to get rid of that and keep other programs? I, I, I would really love to know that because I get understanding. That is something that kids in this town need. She provides a service that no one else is providing. She has the experience. There, there's, we have all these people in this district that has her experience. She specializes in substance abuse. Who calls, who signs up? If you have another person that has it, it, it's not even that. We're saying we're going to go to this position. How? How? Like, I don't understand. It is, uh, uh, this lady said too, it, it's sickening what is happening to this district. You don't know. I come up here and I stay here. But then we can get paid these teachers. I understand because I have my boxers and special education. Okay, so I know it's tender. But when we get coming to school and complaining about a teacher that blames kids since 1997 and that person is still collecting a high salary, we are dealing with this service. And where people can do their job is they're treating kids that are garbage and going in and embarrassing them. How do we keep saying, oh, they won't keep going? Doesn't it work enough by the time that you, you have, you know, you call up and you say, this person, my kids are home right now. My oldest son just got back. My kids are home and I'm here and I'm watching, talk to these kids like garbage. And I just called back the school and I know that, that Mrs. Fandera does address it every single time I call. How do we have these teachers beating kids, embarrassing kids, talking to kids that are garbage? But then we're going to, all the other positions.
Because they're protected from not being a part of that.
It, 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 but if people are tired, I understand it's tired. But when they see something wrong, that's a circumstance here. Ha, like, if, if people keep complaining about certain teachers, we can't just say they're tired. They, they still have to be held accountable for what they're doing. But then like I said, we have a position like one person who does K through twelve substance abuse cancer. That's one position for everybody in the district. One position where we get rid of them, where we're going to continue to keep these teachers that, I'm, I'm not gonna say that they're not doing their job to teach, but teaching is way more than just teaching them. Because if you're messaging their self-esteem, if you're, you're belittling them, that, that's not really helping them. Maybe they're going to two plus two, but they're not gonna have the confidence to go out in the real world. And that's what we're supposed to be educating people to. Is that I, I, I really hope, I pray that if something changes and we do something to keep that substance abuse cancer. Because we need that. This town absolutely needs someone in that position.
Anyone else?
We have resolved an accordance with provisions of the Oklahoma Public Medical Act. The Board of Education shall conduct close executive session pursuant to personnel and legal exceptions prescribed by NJSA 10412 for a purpose discussing personnel and legal matters.
The language.
Nina motion.
I'll motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion.
Second.
No second.
Ken.
Ms. Clay?
She's out.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sijalani?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Keller and Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
As for...
Yes.
Hello?
Hello? It's an announcement. We're gonna be out. Estimated sixty minutes?
Sixty. Okay. Be an hour.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we do this?
Yes.
Is that it? Ken, is it?
Mr. Cook?
Ken? Done?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
President for...
Yes.
A little minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion for approval of minutes for the regular meeting, March 16th, and executive session, March 16th.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second. Second?
I'll second.
Greg, Mr. Butler?
I'm having it back.
Mr. Cook?
Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
President for...
Yes.
Where is the King's Row?
Just read the... just approval of the budget.
Approval of the budget for fiscal year 2022. In the amount of thirty... forty-one million... four ninety-one, seven twenty-one.
Yeah, no, keep going.
And also for fiscal year 2020... twenty-one, twenty-two, transfer from the maintenance reserve account in the amount of $250,000. And approval for travel and politics reimbursements not to exceed $181,100. That's for fiscal year 2022.
Make a motion?
A motion.
Greg?
Greg and Greg.
Greg and Greg. I'll second.
And second by motion.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
President for...
Yes. Yes, approval of the budget. The superintendent at school recommends positive action on the following items under personnel: One, resignations for the district. Two, elimination of the following positions. Three, reduction in force staff. Four, professional employment, 21, 22. Five, transfer of professional staff, 21, 22. Six, long-term substitute teacher district. Seven, long-term substitute teacher revision for the district. Eight, reemployment of professional, 2021, 2021, 2022, professional and non-professional district. Nine, reemployment of paraprofessionals, 21, 22, for the district. Ten, reemployment of administrative professionals, 21, 22, district. Eleven, leave of absence medical. Twelve, leave of absence medical revisions. Thirteen, leave of absence medical intermittent. Fourteen, leave of absence medical intermittent revision. Fifteen, leave of absence FF-CRA/EPS-LA medical revision. And there was an... oh, nope, keep going. Sixteen, leave of absence FF-CRA/EPS-LA medical family revision. Seventeen, leave of absence for childcare.
Motion.
Eighteen, home instruction, 2021. Nineteen, substitute teacher paraprofessionals for the district. Twenty, internship school counseling district. Twenty-one, Keansburg after-school program site coordinators, 21, 22, district. Twenty-two, SAT coordinator district. Twenty-three, district summer program coordinator, 2021. Twenty-four, curriculum writing, high school, middle school, and elementary. Twenty-five, arrival live tour, 2021. Twenty-six, district webmaster revision, 2020, 2021. Twenty-seven, NJSIAA membership resolution. Twenty-eight, job descriptions district. Twenty-nine, Keansburg School District annual calendar, 21, 22. And then there is addendum, additional retirement.
Make a motion?
A motion.
Is it Ken?
No, that's Greg. I'll second it though.
Any questions?
Um, I have one question. Could you explain number 20 about the arrival live? So that's the amount for that is also going to be through the donation of the PBA, correct?
So if you look at... Yes, that, and then it's also paid by grant.
Okay.
Okay.
No, because I like the program, but I see that someone made a nice donation with that money. Good to hear. I get it.
Any other question? Local.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brazil?
I'm gonna say yes, except number two, the business teacher. I think it's gonna be a huge loss to our district. And our kids are gonna suffer a lot. They're gonna hate this new thing.
So you abstain or voting no?
Voting no.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes, heard I abstain on number two. Number three, a number eight professional. The first name on page 10 happens to be a hundred second name in this. Makowski, I abstain. Number 10, I abstain on the second, sixth, eighth, and ninth names.
President for...
Yes, but I abstain on page seven, the last name down the page. And page 13, fourth and fifth name down the page.
To the public?
No, we're not actually mentioning the version. He done.
I think he did.
Here we go. Uh, under policy, only one policy second reading. These are all ones that had already gone through and they're in for second reading.
Make a motion?
No.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
President for...
Yes.
So, number one, received acceptance of board's... Ms. Callahan-Murray? Is put. Uh, number two, approved appropriation of transfers. Number three, approved of boths list. Number four, approved of payrolls. Number five, approved of banking institutional signatures. Number six, designation of custodial of contract. Number seven, resolution goes to the Public Agency Compliance Officer for Keansburg Board of Education. Number eight, resolution authorizing use of the comparable contractual process. Number nine, authorization to purchase. Number 10, 2021 April District Higby Report. Number 11, donation for Keansburg from the Keansburg PBA accepted. Number 12, accept parent match donation. Number 13, 21, 22 World Travel Program Budget Submission. Number 14, to file for the 21st Century Human Learning Center Program Care. Number 15, to file for the 21st Century Human Learning Program Care. Number IDA. Number 16, to file for the current virus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, the CRISI. Order for secondary school emergency relief, Esser, grant application. Number 17, acceptance of the order. Number 18, acceptance of the corrective action plan. Number 19, shared services transportation room law enforcement program. Number 20, special needs. Number 21, homeless tuition.
If you didn't think that you said in the number one discussion?
I just have a question. Did you say you were holding number one? Okay, now.
So hold again? Hold again? Okay.
Oh, they're holding, uh...
I wasn't sure I had the numbers.
This number is two through 21.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Great.
Great.
Any questions?
Just have one question. Uh, for number two, the transfers, the... the second one down, the purchase of eight benches. After 21,000, those are specialized benches. That seems like what... Eight benches, I understand that as well.
Yeah, the installation benches are like, they're all inclusive.
So the... but are those... are those like the bug outs and...
Yes.
Like gauges?
Yeah, it's... it's the benches for the away side, home side, uh, on the fields. For the outside, for the teams, the civilians stuff. Yeah, they're all... they're dilapidated, falling apart, bad shape. So yeah, it's the price to put them in, purchase them, et cetera, the whole, no yards. Yeah, it's a... it's a good price, actually.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Local.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sisliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brazil?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
President for...
Yes.
Open it to the public?
Well, it's like I already want to go home. Um, sorry, but... Why do they... Down, like, down the lines and whatnot, they just make a tradition. I'm allowed to be inside, so 250 people, people very town, bought their dresses, and now they're told to come and watch it. But like, and then to put money in, whatever we have to do to get this for the kids, go the way.
So they have to address the current person?
Okay.
To get these stuff like the usual deal and hire a lot of people, what more? It just has a factor that we do. The people get paid once in a time, or the evening?
We could... we could, if we're allowed, we could totally do it.
So we put this together before restrictions were increased, uh, outside? Um, it's gonna be outside, so we have ten, ten, four, Indian, which is gonna be outside, and now, whatever it is, that would usually happen outside.
Oh, they're gonna have their team, and they're gonna have their school... Oh, they're gonna have their theme, and they're gonna have this whole.
Also, that's a PTA issue, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're supposed to be, yeah. We're all, yeah.
And so that we're going to be there, and then, uh, some of the years, uh...
I imagine it's still gonna be like theme and everything. Yeah, like that, and we have conditions, like, we, we have like, things that kids look forward to every day, like, so, like, for years. So these kids that are coming through are like, looking forward to this. And then to here, and even the parents, like, it's kind of like a heartbreak to the parents. I've been through it a million times, it is kind of like sad to see that my game isn't gonna be able to happen.
Can I say something, okay? Emily's been going to school for, for eighteen years, cheating at a, cheating at a, last year. Everything was, these kids got in the head, like, this was planned for the PTA before the restrictions came out. They didn't get none of the kids, and I got anything last year, but science is in their yard. So, Emily, the group is thankful, the mother, around them, and only a hundred people in the first, like, things can change in another three weeks, and they all say, hey, guess what? It's back to a hundred people, and what we did, I already got all this money on butterfield, and when we asked, first you say, we're not allowed to do it, and, like, you should read on the normal school, up until March. These kids, nothing, nothing, when they can't have it, because they have nothing. Like, we just found out that they can't have it, but over, it was open in the works and giving them, something was better than nothing. Right, a lot, and already being planned for them to have something outdoors, versus, so why do we?
It's not like it's worth warning out, this is a PTA.
Yeah, it is, okay, okay. I was just gonna go outside, I don't know, I was, I'm gonna say graduation last night, I think graduation last year, the fact that we moved it outside for the first time, I think was better. Just because it's moving outside doesn't mean it won't be nice or better.
I know, but, but like, the tradition, like, the kids calm, and they're like, excited to see, isn't, if it's a month, if you're only parents are putting in, this is all.
As you know, I graduated from school, I won the butterfield back in the day, okay, in eighth grade. Right, and I can tell you what we did, we had, we had, we beat stars out of cardboard, covered it with aluminum foil. So when you're talking about a tradition, the butterfield is tradition, and what the board is meant for, but over the years, it changed, who had the PTA or whatever, okay? What we had to be careful for this year is because of COVID and the changes. And if a child was tested positive, that knocked the whole butterfield out. So, for a year, they ordered the supplies from stops in different places, and keep it in, it's for our house, and throughout the year, they shop for that. But number one, they didn't have a lot of resources from the fundraiser, and everybody started shipping in, but again, it could be pulled in at any time. So, due to all the changes with the governors, what you could do, and limitations, they felt to have it outdoors, so the kids could have free space, they could social distance, and make it a beautiful event, like it always is, it's just gonna be different. Remember when we started with COVID, everybody would say, my, my child's not gonna wear a mask, they're not gonna do it, our children were aces. Wasn't the children complaining, it was the parents. And I think right now, that it's what we lead by example. If we say, make it a positive, it's gonna be a beautiful event, the PTA team, the administration, the parents are gonna chip in and make this a night to remember. It's what we make out of it, it's not what we can't do, it's what we can do, and that's gonna make a difference.
And I think, what you decide, that she's sitting there right there, right now, and she's wetting her face, and I'm looking, hoping that she'll be here. It's not just the parents, it's the kids.
Don't we make it nice for the children?
She's a senior. Don't sit here and tell me that it's the parents, she is a senior. Do you want her to go up and express herself in front of you, or do you want me to express?
I'm not disrespecting, I'm just trying to explain.
You're saying it's more of a, more.
I'm talking about the butterfield, though, people speculate it's not gonna be beautiful, like, it is.
I think what Kim was trying to say is the kids have been more recently, and I don't think she meant that.
Not anything, it's gonna be a beautiful event, no one's taking anything away, you're asking where the theme. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I, uh, yeah, like, uh, the kid, it's not, and again, you may wanna think it's the parents, I've been, this will be my sudden butterfield, um, I, I'll get it. But the kids, the kids, the younger kids who go walk through the school, who know about the butterfield, that's not the parents. Do you think I'm a percent, uh, to keep up with the younger, like, I got what I have to, because like, if it's, if it's beautiful like it always is, you think the kids are gonna have, it's gonna be a little different, like, the world is a little different, but no one's gonna say it's not gonna be spectacular.
And nobody likes following their mom that day.
I don't know, is this gonna work? I like for this butterfield every day.
And if I, I mean, we can do a lot of fundraising, so you guys are entitled to this.
I like people like this.
I don't want everything to happen.
Well, I'm not saying that, but they're, like, they're not, what?
Now, but enough of what, because to have it outdoor?
Well, also, thank you.
Have it outdoor.
The kids are looking for what the past has had, so if it's gonna be outside, perfect, but why can't it be, why can't they come into a, who cares, whatever.
All right, we're not, we're not gonna tell them what it is, if they know too much, then we just want them to know right now.
Excuse me.
All these things are surprises, just like we're trying to do every year, we try not to get the notes, so they don't know what it is, so when they do, I'm in there, or something. It's, and they're, that's what we're trying to do, and. They can, like, they can still wear whatever they choose.
I know, but some.
It's still not, it just thought it would be there, like, they wasn't sweating, that's the thing now, outside. It was a lot of, it was a, it was a, that we had, so I think.
All the first members were restricted, right? Moving, really, I don't know, we're already continuing, please, um, turn the butterfield, move to PTA, it starts to be in here, we need to, we need this, we're, I don't know, we can't, we'll have it.
And that, that is.
Preparation, there's parts of the PTA, I don't mind, it's a school, but it is not good.
Right, so, how many active members are with the PTA? But the major, the major, the, the, like, say, the PTA, that's fine, and it's not, yeah, yeah, that is what, that's, that's, I'm, 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 I'm. And I'm not, I'm not, but there's people, there's people that are telling you right here, right now, that are willing to help in whatever way they can. So I'm just putting that out there, that there are parents who.
Right.
And that's mine, so I, I move calm, then I go on to church, like, it's, and I get, and we, like, not that, these kids have, not one, one day, or any day. So, remember the class of twenty, twenty-one, in school, they all had the, you know, they had, they had, no, I agree, that we, we, we never heard from you, but, and I've seen you, and I, they had nothing. But like, their first, had, in the beginning of school, it's a lot, they had nothing.
I think that mom is gonna be, I love their mom, I think it's gonna be our best mom, we have to, right?
I'm just, I'm just saying, like, uh, okay, where she was kids, where she was kids. These kids, what about these kids, they have, they have, had nothing, no, no, not one, not one day, not one day, and, like, are, are jobs here supposed to be to, like, try to keep things, just come out, pass it for the kids? Like, why could they have this, this stuff? They had one missing birthday, but it's still not fine, and that's gonna just go back into the activation?
Where was their senior trip supposed to be to? This day, the night, it's not senior trips. No, but she said they could, I thought they had something planned.
No, they, they, they did, well, they had, they had, they had, um, as the board said, it was like a pay trip, some plan, there was a, 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 a bus. Which doesn't really make sense, because we're allowed to go on the bus to games, but we can't go on the bus to, like, six five or something.
I, I, it's the stupidest thing I've ever heard.
But since the regulations have been lifted, is it something that they could look into for the kids?
We can ask, like, it was just discussed last week at our roundtable, but I can ask if they're.
If it's just a great, if it's a great trip, and it's something that they did raise the money for, it's something for, it's a, and it's still non-hidable, because.
Girl, why, you're wrong, well, I've been lying to you. That was just something that, that was not us, that was told to us, so I can ask and see if, because everything changed, it's not gonna change.
And you can, no, you can, you can, you can, you can go, I'm like, your present prices are paid, so it's nothing, and that, I'm sure that she doesn't have, like, you know, look at, or has something already, if she can run with it, to just go and plan it, booking.
And you can't, if there's something that you need, you can always come to the board, we try to donate and help out, you know, when you guys are collecting, you guys are amazing with fundraising. Really, but if we can help in any way, just get in touch, you know, with Mr. Rara, and, you know, we'll pull together, I mean, we want you to enjoy your time, you know, we didn't put these restrictions, no one planned this, but we want you to enjoy what time we have, like, so if they're opening up things, maybe there's something that we can do to help, you know, have the next six weeks of good times going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? So, I'm, I'm gonna ask a few questions about the thing, the butterfield, it's all over the league.
No, no, no.
So if it rains?
So, we have, are we drinking something that hits your pockets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, just for, 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 uh, 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 it'll be there for, it'll be, they have a policy that's there for the PTA, for the IDA. There are about two days for, 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 uh, so, we're not scared of the standard, they can, they can't wait. So, they can say, they can say, it's time, they can say, we're waiting, they're not scared of it, it is gonna happen. Um, so, that is difficult for...
No, just rain will make it difficult for the kids to... And you're, you're saying about the seniors, uh, the seniors for, for the trip or something, the eighth grade, what about many of the times, and they always had a eighth grade trip? And parents have heard, I think, a lot of parents are asking, talking about, all of that is done for the eighth grade?
I just, I just...
So, now that they opened stuff, what about opening up for the eighth grade as well?
Now, also, you can, you can, you know, blow fire, uh...
And there's not, I mean, things, since things are just opening, there's not, like, there's, you know, for seniors, like...
So, you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do something that can't get, together, do, uh, 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 uh?
Yeah, or like, sorry, or like, the seniors have, like, the senior launch, like, could you do that for the seniors? Or they break, like, bike truck or something?
Yeah, there's probably, uh, I'm assuming, uh...
Yeah, to do, like, yearbooks and stuff, just, like, some...
If, if I might say, I think, you know, if this COVID has caused anything, is, there's always an option, no matter what it is, and, like you just mentioned, a nice new job. We're going to continually make new adjustments, just like, okay, there's a rainy day, you know, take COVID out of it. We'll be tense, we'll, we'll really plan for these things. I think as these restrictions are continuing to be lifted, I think we can have a room, but you also gotta account for, like, the place, like, many of the times, as you mentioned, I do not know what their COVID restrictions are, but they might not fall into the place that is comparative to what we do. And we wanna keep everybody safe, but that's not saying that we're not gonna add something planned, we're not having the kids enjoy themselves, because that's a... We want to, and we need to...
But that's, but that's, yeah, we can, but we only have 100 minutes, so, yeah, we can, but...
We can as a fund, you know, like, and the restrictions, they just, they were just like, they were just like...
Well, they're starting to blow it, you're coming out and telling them.
We did this yesterday, these restrictions were lifted on us from the state. Exactly, the state telling us we're not allowed to plan these types of things.
And for this, 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 like, this, like, this, like, January, like, all, seriously, he gives them that option, so, these kids have a, where it could be 103 lives, which is...
You really find that, she did, she was, she was, you just play, try to...
I don't know, it may sound like a chance in the box under the state, but we have to follow state laws, I mean, we can, we can, you know? They just gave us permission yesterday, who knows, they could take it away a week from now.
So, we just get some, for the eighth graders, instead of getting retired, because we can't give them that, and figure out something...
There's always an option, that's what I'm saying, and if the restrictions get even better, then maybe we can explore more options. But the kids are still going to enjoy themselves, we're never gonna take that away.
Yeah.
I mean, it last year was unforeseen, nobody could have planned it. Mrs. Brazil, our kid wasn't able to experience prom. I mean, obviously, it's great, it's fun, or other members, other people are never able to experience prom. But we're gonna get, we're hoping we're gonna keep exploring those options.
Well, that's what I'm asking. But, because if they're gonna have fun, and we're getting to all these things, or whatever, you're saying, we're talking about committing in school, what you're saying is irrelevant, you're saying all these things, but what I'm asking about the trips. You're saying there doesn't plan, so they're gonna have fun, what, sitting in school?
No.
Because I think that, what you just said was not irrelevant. What you said was irrelevant, so you're talking about people, I'm not, I'm talking about now. I'm talking about the eighth grade, I came up here and asked a simple question, because parents have not heard anything.
You didn't?
I wanted to know, wait for something planned, if it's, now, then say now.
It just changed yesterday, not the last one.
Yeah, thank you, that, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, saying, because they're gonna have fun, fun doing what? If you have an idea, then say, oh, well, we have this movie planned.
Well, what, this little, I just gonna try to...
Well, that, that, that's what I said, that's why I asked, because parents don't know, so we need to be prepared. Also, we, we have to come up with money for the trip, or anything like that. People are asking, you know, like, people know, like, we're the ones that come, so people are asking to ask if things, if things are planned. Just saying, nobody, and nobody stood there, I certainly did not come up here and say, oh, because of COVID, well, I could go, so I got that, I asked a simple question, and you just, like, you smoke that, and you're gonna tell me that they're gonna have, you know, fun. And I know that they're gonna have fun, really, if nothing is planned, just say, nothing is planned. Just be straight, clear, and say, I'm sorry, nothing is planned, because everything is because of COVID right now. So, just say, nothing is planned. I am not that parent to sit there and, and try to passify me, when I'm asking a simple question. I have the right to know, I have the right to know what is planned for my child. And if there's a rainy day, or something that, that, that's, you know, available, or is that, I, I, I guess, as she said, if there is something available possibly for the seniors, is that possible for the eighth grade? If it's not, then simply say no, don't pretend...
He didn't say no, he, he didn't say no.
No, I know, if they do hurt seconds, like, oh, they're working, oh, they're gonna have a good time anyway. How are you saying, because what, what is planned? Is that the point, saying, just say...
He's gonna look into it, so whatever they do for the seniors, I'm sure they're gonna go for the eighth grade. If there's something they can do, then...
Well, and, and like I said, we have the right to ask. So, also, I'm gonna ask too, if, if you're a person in school, and a child walks into a classroom, and there's no teacher, is it reasonable to say that we will ask where that teacher is? Is that reasonable? So, if my child was pulling from homeschool, and no teacher shows up in front of the computer for 12 minutes, is it reasonable for me to call and ask why there is no teacher? Okay, because my child was embarrassed, and he literally, by the teacher yesterday, because I called the school at 1:12, asking if she'd get the proper green, what, when, whatever, for a green? Didn't say anything about the teacher, because I didn't think this teacher, they were smiling my child. And I don't appreciate a break, and I've come to the school multiple times. I don't appreciate my child being embarrassed in front of the classroom, because, oh, yes, I asked a question. You expect these kids that are from virtual, and Michael is sick, he doesn't have a teacher? You expect those kids to treat them at school, so if there's no teacher there? I think that it's reasonable for me to leave the school, and not my child having to be embarrassed, saying that we're not at full school, and they're doing what they have to do, and they're trying their best, and they're not able to have the call, because I don't feel, I don't see the... We're just gonna keep it calm, and people are gonna be...
Anyone else?
Uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Willis on your promotion, as vice principal, working with Mr. Rar. We thank you for all your...
We apologize for that, honey.
And really, just, you know, just being here for our kids, and we now will show up in your role.
I just want to say congratulations, Mr. Willis, you're a, you're a good team.
Just about saying, congratulations on your board, your new position. Um, glad to thank the PDA for their kind donation, as well as the town for their donation, for food account. I do have one question, I used to work a lot, I know in the form of the last meetings we just approved, we, we, you know, the, the coordination with the building, and the other building, um, I've seen some complaints about the...
They were just... Uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Willis, both the administrative team, we're very happy to have you here. Um, also, there are some transfers that occur tonight, that just, uh, Anne, Danielle, Colleen, Damian, I want to congratulate you guys on your new positions, and new transfers. It was an end, so I don't know if everybody saw, there was a couple hobbies of, we had some parent professionals that have been here for a long time, that, uh, also retired or resigned, depending on the circumstance. And then also, our last new retirement was Miss Katie Corey, and I want to wish her all the best in life, and say that she's been amazing, she taught our children, she's an amazing educator, she's an amazing person, I call her Snow White, everything about her, sweet, sunshine, and she's just wonderful, and I just wish her the best, and thank her for her service here at Queensworth.
I'd just like to congratulate everyone that got their, our positions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming, I'm gonna take a walk to the chair.
Second? Third? Fourth?
Mr. Cook?
Yes, yes.
He said yes.
Ms. Brazil?
Yes.
Mr. Kaluwarin?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Makowski?
Yes.
Yes.